Twenty-five, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Uh, if you would please all rise as we say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Once again, welcome again. Sue, could uh, you do a roll call for me, please?
Commissioner Cadwalder.
Here.
Commissioner Chambers.
Here.
Commissioner Holst.
Here.
Commissioner Gadula.
Here.
Commissioner Plank.
Here.
Commissioner Barnett.
Here.
And Chair Ellis.
Yes, here. Okay, um, first thing on the agenda from January is election of officers and organizations. And our first docket is chairman of this committee. Do I have any nominations?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Tony.
I'll second.
I'll third.
As long as I'm not it.
Any discussions?
Nope, we're good.
Any other nominations?
No.
Okay. All in favor, do we have some, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or do we do a voice vote?
I guess he has to accept nomination.
Yeah, I guess. Do we do a voice vote?
I can do a voice.
Let's do a voice vote.
Commissioner Cadwalder.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Holst.
Yes.
Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett.
Yes.
And Chair Ellis.
Yes. Okay, so that's... Okay, good. Uh, the next on the docket is vice chair. Do I have any nominations for vice chair?
Yeah, I believe we had Mike be vice chair. Is that right, David?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I nominate David.
I would re-nominate him.
There you go.
Okay.
So. I would nominate Nicole.
Nicole? Any discussion?
Wait a minute.
Anybody else?
You guys have a discussion.
So we have two nominations. Nicole, you like?
I'll nominate John. Is everyone going down the road?
We would need a second.
Yeah, so if you're gonna have multiple nominations, then we should have a nominee for somebody and then someone should second one of the nominations. So it's clear what you would be voting on.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, no, I think I take that one back.
Okay, right, on the table, we have a nomination for Mike. Do I have a second?
I second Mike.
Okay, we have a second. Discussion. Is there any other nominations?
Nicole.
Is there a second for Nicole?
I second.
All right, I'm way confused now.
So we're fine, Sue.
Okay, second for Nicole. Any discussion?
Well, what are the responsibilities and do you, either of you actually want to do it?
So, I mean practically speaking, if you're vice chair, basically you're chair when the chairperson cannot be in evidence. Beyond that, I don't know that there are any special duties or responsibilities that belong with a role. So whoever is vice chair, as long as Tony attends all of his meetings, you're
You're clear.
Your role will change that much, but you will be in charge of running a meeting if in the event that Tony's not able to attend.
And we'll need a vice chair here regardless if Tony gets called up, uh, fire call and he's gone for X amount of time, so...
Right. I don't know, I mean, there was how many, uh, how many meetings, Mike, did you run last year? One?
Just the one, yeah.
The one, so.
It's pretty tough.
So I'm gonna guess at this point, we have two nominations.
I have one. Marty nominated Michael Gadula and Cadwalder seconded.
Yep.
And then I have Gadula, you've nominated Nicole. And I lost count of who seconded her.
I'll second.
Someone seconded that one.
So, if you've already done it and you don't wanna do it and you're nominating her.
I, I truly don't care. I can do it.
Then I think she should do it.
That's fine. I've run meetings before.
You wish to withdraw?
Okay.
If you don't want to do it.
I voted that.
I don't know what I'm doing in terms of the whole thing, but I can run a meeting. I can run a meeting.
I'll help if you need.
Okay, so we have one nomination now, right?
Yes, and I can do a roll call on that.
And we will, uh, roll call, vote.
Commissioner Cadwalder.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Holst.
Yes.
Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett.
Yes.
And Chair Ellis.
Yes. Very good, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next we have reviewing and adoption of the planning commission rules and procedures. Have they have not changed, have they?
No.
So I will entertain a motion to adopt these things.
I'll make that motion.
I can second that.
Discussion.
I have one question, and I apologize, I did not have a chance to read through these. I think we had a question at some point last year about the timeframe for public comments. Is that called out in here?
We as city council are gonna be addressing that and we're gonna make it uniform amongst all boards.
Okay.
So we have not done that yet. Um, I know we have a pair of time clocks coming. One will go against that back wall, one will come up here on the dais, uh, so it's fair custody.
Okay, I just wanna make sure it wasn't called out in here and if we needed to amend it in here, then that was done. So if it's not in here, then perfect.
We're just waiting for legal to tell us a report.
Great.
Any question?
If in the future, these can be amended at any time, so if you, once that is, you know, approved or accepted by the city council, if you want to amend these specifically to state, you know, if this is about the three minutes versus five minutes, yeah. So if you're gonna specifically state one of those time periods in here for, you know, clarity, that's actually fine. You don't have to wait until the end of the year to change these, amend them, whatever you want.
Yeah, we're looking to go with the screen.
What, three minutes? Good. Let us know when that happens.
Yep.
So the motion is on the table, uh, supported. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose the same. Motion carries. Okay, section two letter D, the twenty-twenty-five meeting dates.
Oh, okay.
Bump your head, right?
But then your chair.
That will I say. And the meeting dates are on the last page before the November's minutes. Take a minute to review those and I will entertain a motion to accept these dates.
Make a motion to accept them.
I will support.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose the same. Motion carries. Okay, approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
No support.
And I'll make that motion.
Very good. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose the same. Uh, number four, approval of the minutes of the previous meeting back in November. Do I have a motion to accept these minutes as written?
Make a motion to accept them.
Any second?
I'll second.
All in favor to approve the minutes of November as written, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries. I would like to open it up to, uh, public comments and communications concerning items not on tonight's agenda. If you wanna come up, please come up, state your name and, uh, say hi, let us know. You're good? All is good? Okay, I, uh, close public comments. Oh, business. We've been working on the master plan update. Uh, we all got that in our emails. Andy, can, would you like to take us through this?
Yes, so I'll kind of bring you back up to speed. So at the November meeting, we reviewed the complete draft. We have, you know, made a handful of changes here there based on comments that you've made between. Uh, then since then, between November and now, uh, we asked for your input over the holidays. We received, uh, communications from a few of you, uh, with, just with some, with some comments. So if they're process-wise, I guess we can, you can continue to review it. We can review some of the changes. My note, Commissioner Barnett, you had a few edits that you sent me a couple of days ago. So I think it would be helpful to review some of those suggestions with the planning commission. So they all know what you're thinking and they can sort of agree or not with your, uh, changes there. And then from here, where we would go is you could either, you could take no action tonight and then return next month with an updated draft and incorporate these changes. Or if you're comfortable with what's, uh, suggested tonight, you could make the motion to send it to the city council for distribution, subject to these changes being, you know, incorporated into the document. From there, the city, the, uh, the city council has to, has to approve the plan for distribution. We have to distribute it to the neighboring townships and, uh, county and the region and some other entities. We have to wait sixty-three days for them to provide comment and then eventually hold a public hearing and final adoption would be later in the spring. So process-wise, there's a lot left to wait for. But in terms of actually producing the document, we're at or very near the, the finish line here, so. I guess, from here, I guess, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you for, for edits and questions. I know because I, Commissioner Barnett's got a few to review. And if anybody else has additional things they'd like to see adjusted, we'd be happy to make those changes for you. Um, and then we can discuss what we want to do after that.
Okay? So do you wanna go through it?
I.
Let me just bring up the ones.
Yes.
I'm not gonna bring up all the little typos and change this because it worked out in the end. What I have in front of you, on page fifteen, we say Lowell Public Schools in King Milling are among the top employers of the city. I'm not sure what we're trying to say there and I don't even know if that's accurate. I think Lighthouse has considerably more employees than King Milling. And so maybe we even just take it out because it seems like it's a bumper sticker for those companies. Almost like we're favoring one over the other. I mean, there's a lot of top employers in the city, so I don't know what you mean. Top is very qualitative, but I think we mean best of the most.
Especially when we're saying among the top.
Yeah.
Does feel like we're giving top Milling to King Milling.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not against them either, but I just don't know that we should.
I think it was the investment they made.
So that's fair, the, the top investor in the city.
Can we say that instead? Top investor?
Well, I mean, this is all about employment. We're trying to shape and just kind of orient everybody to the employment factors in the, in the city of Lowell. I mean, the only other thing I brought up too is Lowell Public Schools, Lowell Area Schools, half of their schools are not in the city of Lowell, so. Spilled significant impact in the community.
Atwood, we have, there's a lot of employees.
I went off their public website. King Milling says about sixty employees in Lowell. Lighthouse says three hundred and seventy-five. So I mean, that is a pretty big difference.
Atwood eventually is gonna put a big addition on and they're gonna bump a way up.
We could also add those two to that list.
We could add all of them.
I mean, if those are, I mean, yeah, I think, so the point behind that, that sentence in that paragraph, right? We're talking about number of employees and what are the sort of the largest employers in terms of people in the city. So if there are larger employers, we should maybe just list them. So if, if you wanna add Lighthouse and Atwood, that's, that might be the simplest thing to do there. I mean, King Milling is obviously a significant store. Yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a major connection between them and the city, which I think is worth mentioning. But we can certainly add those with the two as total.
If I can add one word on that page, John?
I had a question about the actual chart itself and the formatting.
Um, I think that maybe in some of those lines, page fifteen. I think in some of those lines, we maybe have a couple of different categories put together in the same line. Like professional, scientific and management is maybe one category. And then administrative and waste management services is maybe another category of employers. But in the way that it's formatted, felt clunky to read. I was wondering if maybe there was a better way of differentiating those.
I thought the same thing.
Like maybe professional, scientific and management, maybe like a backslash or even a semicolon instead of a comma? Just to differentiate between the different categories of employers instead of, I don't know. I was just having a really hard time until I was like, oh, I think those are categories.
I think it's a direct lift from the twenty-twenty US Census data, so it's really hard to break it out because that's where you got it from.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, you're right. And that's, I mean, so we can, we can certainly look at the, the kind of the syntax there. But you're right, that whole, like, it's a long list of stuff.
Yeah.
It is a little clunky and it comes right out of the census, so we're a little, like, if we wanna maybe add like a semicolon or something, like you had mentioned, I think that would be fine. But I hesitate to break that out into two separate
Right.
rows, because I don't know which number to associate with that.
To associate which, right.
Into one category.
Yeah. Oh.
I just had two others, kind of, well, three, really. So the place making plan or the place plan? I've never been able to access that on a city website, but we reference.
Yeah, I would not have been able to find it either. I think you were gonna email it at one point.
We call it the place plan in the, the master plan, but I think the city refers to it as the placement plan.
Yeah, I noticed in one spot it was called a couple of different things, even on the same page.
I just recommend we bring that up. This one, these last two are kind of related. So this is about hydrology and then the goal three, objective A of improving the Flat River. So I was, just because this is gonna get a lot of attention in the next year. And if we put it in the master plan, maybe we can help define it a little bit. But under hydrology, I would add a sentence that says, of the approximate sixty-six miles of Flat River mainstream, two percent, one point three miles flow through the city of Lowell. So we're not a huge stakeholder in kind of influencing the Flat River, especially because we're on the tail end of it. And then I think for the goal or the objective, we kind of rewrite it, um, and I gave into the exact verbiage, it's not that. What's that?
You have pages on?
That is page sixty-three, goal three, objective A, improving the Flat River. I would, I'd recommend in cooperation with stakeholders that control the flow of the Flat River and upstream communities that affect the watershed, improve the physical and digital access and navigability of the Flat River. I mean, there is a two, two thousand and two updated Flat River natural plan, we could also even say in conjunction with DNR. We're in coordination with Michigan DNR. There's a, there's a lot of, page sixty-three. That was, I mean, that was really the significant.
I think that makes sense.
We know that there's gonna be a lot of talk about the river and various citizens concerned about what to do with the river over the next couple of years.
I do know that that group that got formed has been meeting quite regularly.
So maybe I should go with that.
And they're making great strides towards coming up with how to, I don't wanna say cure the problem, but start to address the problem. It's, it's just gonna take time. They met last Monday, um...
You know what the, the group's name is?
Friends of the
Friends of the Flat River. Unfortunately, I can't ever attend because I have to be sitting here in my other position.
I think really, hydrologically, we're really talking about the empowerment of the Flat River. Like, when you're talking about the other miles upstream, that's a whole, and all the laps, like, we're just talking about empowerment, you know? So if that is something that, some verbiage there makes things easier in the future, specifying the impacted area immediately and all of this. That's definitely a free form river.
David, have you been part of those conversations?
Nope.
Tina either?
What's that?
Tina hasn't either?
No. Who is on it?
Craig Fox, there is the chair and then
Nancy.
Yeah. Uh, there's quite a few of them. Um, Annette Reusma, she's on there. I don't know all of them, but they get a pretty good group. And they're, I did step in for a few minutes of their conversation with the company that's gonna start doing the spraying and they were pretty in-depth of how do you do it, why we do it that way? But just unfortunately, on Monday, I can't, I just, I don't have the time. And that's because I have to be here.
I'm excited.
It is moving forward. Um, I think it's a, it's a good forward. If it wasn't, I think we would have all heard by now. But I think anything this board can do to help, uh, I believe we should.
I agree. John, is that? Yeah. You got all of that stuff? Andy? Nicole, do you have any concerns or besides panelists and whatever?
No, I just hung over the few formatting things I had and that formatting on page fifteen, that people was the only thing I.
Marty, how about you?
Oh, I'm good.
Yeah?
So I had one thing that struck me during, in the later chapter on implementation, chapter eight, on page, what is that? Eighty-five, it talks about, um, you know, future changes to zoning ordinance. You can recommend, make some recommendations of it and so on, but it's pretty open-ended. There's no like timeframe for that. I'm just curious what, you know, if we wanted to specify some vision with respect to the timing of ordinances, of revisionist ordinances, or if we wanna leave it open-ended, kind of as it is? It just seemed kind of like a strange fit to me in terms of implementation in that it says like, we recommend some of these revisions. There's been revisions made in twenty-twenty, so it's not essential. But here's a bullet list of revisions. It's like, there's not a clear vision there for how we're implementing anything.
Yeah, and I kind of took that is if this board or a future board wanted to change, um, it was built in to make those changes. I don't know if I'm accurate with that, but that's kind of how I looked at it. I just think it gives the future boards
Food for thought.
Yes.
And that's fine if that's how it's intended to be taken. It just didn't seem like a, a, there was a, in a chapter about implementation, it didn't look like there was a plan for implementing these suggestions or a timeframe for that.
I think we can make it come out that way. Right, Andy?
Yeah, I mean, so you're right. And so a couple of things, that when we talked about the, you know, the work that was done in, in twenty-twenty, that was sort of a methodical cover-to-cover, complete review of the air ordinance, if you remember. This, so this is kind of targeting or I guess contemplating more limited amendments towards specific topic areas. You're right, there isn't a, a specific date in mind here. We could certainly do that or say within five years, you know, you should look at these topics. And we could still leave it open-ended enough to say that, you know, beyond five years, you know, eight years from now, you can still change whatever you want. And, you know, in a way that, that makes sense. What we've also done in, in some communities at the end is put together a little table that has sort of like short-term, midterm, long-term priorities that might help to give, give you guys in the city council some direction in terms of like, this is something that we feel like we need to start working on right away. Compared, you know, as opposed to something that maybe isn't going to be appropriate to work on until twenty-thirty or whatever.
Yeah, I would just say put in there some sort of like suggested timeframe for reviewing these, just so it's on our radar in terms of like, a couple of years from now, like, oh, hey, we meant to come back to that, you know? Just because otherwise it kind of just gets lost in there and then next revision, you're looking at it and like, oh, man, we said we should have looked at this. And then we never did.
So what are you thinking, like, two, three years, circle back to it?
Yeah.
Two years.
Circle back to it or something like that.
Okay.
You good?
Yeah.
David?
I'm good.
You're good? And Mike?
I'm good, David.
You're good? Okay, I was pleased that I added some stuff in the fire department area. Did you get that stuff?
Yep, so we did all that.
And, and update numbers and on equipment and stats of what Lowell Fire actually runs. But, uh, for the most part, I think we have good, uh, good master plan with these changes. In my opinion, I think we, uh, with these changes, we should submit it to the city council for approval.
Well, this would just be for distribution of the draft, so we have a long way to go before there's like a final approval. So this action requires a, a long distribution and review process. So if the planning commissioner were to make a motion this evening, it would be to recommend distribution to the city council.
Okay. Distribution to city council.
Right, so the city council has to be the one who officially distributes the draft to the neighboring communities and so forth.
Sitting on city council, I think we need to do a little bit more, actually, I think we need to do quite a bit more legwork before it comes to us for that, that style of goal.
To approve or distribution?
For distribution. Um, I don't think we're quite there yet. We're very close. But I don't think, I don't think the master plan is quite far enough along just as of yet. It's probably a month away.
What, uh, in what regards should we look at? The issues, what issues do you see that need work?
We, we, we talked about affordable housing and we still, I feel we still need to touch more on that base. Our downtown community and our walkability and stuff like that, um, all things we are working on. But I just think the bigger the, the package you can put together, the better off, um, we're gonna be because we're gonna digest it as city council. Uh, we're gonna make a decision and we're gonna move on. So the more we can put in front of us at one time, the better off we are.
Do you wanna make, do you wanna put that on next month's agenda to look at the, uh, portable housing and downtown area?
Yeah, I really do, because I think it's important.
To review that planning to colonize?
Yeah. Because
That common riverside drive too.
Yes, and that's all things we've been really passionate about, right? So let's, let's get it hammered out, done and move it on. It's a big ticket item and if we can do that, I think we're, uh, I think we're in a really good position. My opinion.
Gonna make a motion to put those two things on the, Jennifer?
February.
I will make that motion.
Any support?
I'll support it.
Discussion. Okay, very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose the same. Okay, we will definitely be looking at that in February.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
Do you want, are you thinking that we need to add more to the plan to address those specific topic areas? Like, we need to, should we be bringing additional data, research, recommendations? Or something to use so that we can add that into this document for Louison? Is that your?
Yeah, because the board we currently have, I think the more information we can put in part of them, the better off we truly are, right? Information is king, so, yeah, I would like to, to do that, just fill in more of the blanks.
Okay, do you have certain goals that you see?
Not right now.
Good. You're very elusive.
Well, I know what, okay, so I'm privy to some information that isn't...
Can discuss them.
Right, so there are things we are currently working on that it'll make sense when it makes sense. I don't know about Fromm and I don't know if they're gonna be, what their timeline is, right? And basically Fromm's refusal to do handicap accessibility down there, to me, that's huge, right? There, without going in...
Do you consider that with other developers that are building places that are not being accessible?
There's other developers that are looking to be here, that are looking to do affordable and employee-based affordable housing. That's the best I can put it. I can't get into the weeds, but...
So, so we have goals and objectives as a section, we have, you know, the zoning types and then we have implementation, right? So, and then there's just the research behind it. So are you talking about we need more research investigating the need for affordable housing? Or are you talking about we need a more specific stated goal relative to, so that's the thing?
Yes.
It's like specific metrics and goals related to affordable housing?
Affordable housing? Agendas that they come to us, we need a set of standards to go by.
Yeah.
So just in terms of clarification, maybe that helps? Andy, then, you know, like goals for, you know, because I mean, our plan shows like certain zoning areas that like, those things are only gonna fit in certain areas, right? Sometimes we're talking about changing those physical areas, it's not, you know, and, yeah, so, yeah, okay, makes sense.
And for the downtown area?
Sure.
Whatever. Public access for this.
One, one more second. Uh, and for the downtown area, you also think that there are some, quite a few goals that we need to cover?
There's a huge potential for downtown to do, I don't wanna call it affordable housing, but I wanna call it, uh, somebody that gets a job at, let's say, at what can afford to live in our downtown. Whether it's rent by, um, we have an untapped potential on our main street. Put housing on our second floors.
Okay. So it's kind of a similar task to, some kind of a set of standards to go by?
So when you said downtown, you were talking about housing?
Yeah.
For that too?
The, the second floors, right? If you take the block I'm in, twelve new residence, residential can be created.
It's allowed, right, by zoning now, but I mean, after, after mixed use?
Currently, yes.
A lot of do that right now.
Right, but there's an opportunity to do more, again, not the portable housing, but housing that can be afforded by the average family. They have a special word for it, I just, I'm drawing the blank on it right now. I truly am.
I think we get the idea though.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, yes, if you please come and state your name.
Hello, Tyler Kent, 280, Jane Allen. Just wanted to provide a couple of quick comments regarding the master plan. Uh, one, I think containable housing is important, someone who took two years to even get a hold of the goal, it is kind of a challenge, it's not just a uniquely low problem, but it is a problem that we will exhibit probably for a number of years here. Just as another point to bring forward is, and forgive me, I have not been able to find the latest version of the master plan since July of last year, so if this has been addressed, then I will take it back. But, you know, I think with the increase in population here in the city and the townships surrounding, transportation's a pretty big subject and thing is kind of, you know, inadvertently left out of this master plan. Should be encompassing of that, I think, like Alden Nash had developed in the south of town, uh, something like that should be included in the master plan, whether it's goals, objectives, implementation. But something in there with improvements to our road system is pretty critical and I hope there's something in there that eludes to. So, my comment, thank you. Take it, Tyler.
And talking about the transportation, address them as relation to M21 and the intersection to that, but I don't know that we address M50, if you will, as like a south of town. I noticed that today as I was reading it.
Andy, how much, uh, is there about transportation? Are you referring to public transportation?
Vehicle transportation, vehicle drive, road.
Vehicle logistics.
Yeah, so we have, we have, we have two transportation goals, um, and each, each goal, six and seven, each, we have one goal that talks about the city maintaining a transportation network that is sensitive to land use and serves, protecting the integrity of residential neighborhoods and promoting safety within all areas of the city. And the second goal is maintaining an attractive appearance of major entrances to the city like its principal transportation corridors. If we want to add additional objectives to maybe talk in more detail about, about either sort of the key corridors like Alden Nash, south of town, or if we need to do more to talk about improving, you know, just regular maintenance and improvements to the residential and other streets of the city. We don't talk, um, you know, don't need to get a ton into like M21 and Main Street because that's the number, but if there's, you know, a need to talk about more to support improvements to other city streets, we can certainly add some more to that section, add additional, um, objectives or an additional goal if we need to, to add a little more there, that's fine with me.
Thoughts? I don't wanna get too specific in transportation because then you get blinded, you know, but keeping it...
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly talk about it, so, you know, it's not emphasized as much as some other topic areas just because the planning commission and the master plan, you know, primarily is a land use and zoning related document and so you don't have zoning jurisdiction over a street, obviously. But at the same time, I think it's helpful because this is not, you know, there's, well, there's a lot of, you know, interaction and overlap in transportation and planning and land use, so all, all that works, works together, right? So I think it's worth talking about in here for sure. So like I said, we'd be happy to add some additional, some additional policy in here along those lines if that would be helpful.
But just, so is it about accommodating extra volume or about the safety and quality of the roads? I mean, what are, or both? And what, what are the, what's the goal that we're trying to meet?
I mean, see, if you want to address the person who brought it up, I mean, I, I don't want to...
What is your more specific, please come up. More specifically, are you referring to?
Just to add for clarification, I think it can be something a little more broad, but more looking into, uh, you know, it doesn't have to be specific, hold that for being aware of developments and trying to, you know, make sure roads are capable of accommodating growing area or something to that extent.
Volume of traffic.
So can you volume the traffic or are you just, you know, parking something else that can be considered too, but something around that line, but in addition, you could also look at, you know, maintaining a state with repair for facilities, which is kind of, you know, ingrained in our system already, but I think just to bring it forward on there. It's been brought up in the past, the city council a few times, it's important for folks. You know, we talk about Riverside Drive and others, um, and I think that's important. I'd love to write any type of bullet points if people wanna look at a suggestion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Anything else that we've seen the master plan that we haven't addressed? Okay, and, uh, do we make that motion, do we put it on the next, we, on the next month's agenda?
Well, so you already added a couple of items, almost was still in the discussion phase, I think we have two things to add to the agenda. I don't think the master plan, I could need a motion to specifically do anything with the master plan at this point, it's under home business. Yeah, so it'll, it'll mean, it'll stay under home business for next month too.
Okay.
I got a question, Andy. If, like Tyler, would like to see the traffic flow and, and how that all works, how does our master plan tell the townships they can't put in a 250-home subdivision? But that's what I'm getting at, right? So the flow's gonna come, not from us, because we're built up. I think the flow's gonna come from around us, so it, and I don't, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around it, but I don't know if there's anything you can put in to...
To accommodate?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, so I mean, you're right, so if in Lowell Township or Virginia Township, they put in a large-scale residential development, it's gonna generate, you know, 2,000 trips a day or something like that onto one of the streets that, yes, that will inevitably affect, um, the city, but, you know, because they're their own municipality, they'll, they have their, and they have their own zoning ordinance and they can make their own decisions on, on what they want to do with that, certainly, um, both the, e- e- either township would take into account, you know, the effect on, on traffic as part of a large development like that, but, um, you know, the city's not gonna have the authority to say, you must deny this or you must reduce the size of this project because that's gonna mean there's too much traffic on, you know, East Main or West Main or, you know, this road or whatever. That part, I think, is gonna be a little bit more difficult. We, we do have, have an objective presently in, in, in the plan that talks about maintaining an awareness of regional transportation issues that affect the Lowell area and work proactively to address them. So to the extent that, you know, there should be, maybe in the, in the future, or is it now, there should be some sort of a regional, you know, transportation or, you know, street committee or something like, you know, I don't know, it's not been written, well, there's a, like, there, there's a committee that talks about M57 issues from time to time. If, you know, if there needs to be something like that, I think there's already support for that in, in here, but again, some of the transportation issues are more difficult because the jurisdiction varies, you know, the township's or the jurisdiction of the county. The city owns its, its own streets and, you know, you guys pave your own streets and do all that work for the most part, so, um, it's a little different just because it's, it's more decentralized and there's not like a single, you don't, even though it might only be a mile down the road, you don't have control over something that happens on the outside of your boundaries, but if you have concerns, just like with anyone else, you know, the city, the city or you all as residents would have, you know, the ability to express those concerns, be part of the process.
Okay. Like, to keep it generic too, I mean, like you said, we can't break the future, we are aware of potential explosion outside of our, uh,
Sure.
city limits.
Yeah, so I mean, I think, you know, to, you know, the comments made, I think, are, are perfectly reasonable things to, to put in here, so, you know, we can, we can work on some text to address, you know, what he's suggesting here. And then, of course, well, you'll, you know, we'll have another bite at the apple next month in order of working on other topics as well.
Okay. Any other discussion on the master plan? Okay, number seven, new business. We have no new business, is this correct? I have a question about, uh, the city council. Are you members of the city council, I mean, you sit here and there, is it, the communication between, between this council and that council, can we bring into our agenda and overview of what you guys talk about so we're not necessarily, um, in the dark of what's going on? We can go to the meetings as well, but just a, your overview, is that out of the bounds of this council?
I don't think so, but if I can, Mr. Chair, can I at least get legal to weigh in?
Yeah, this is something I would like to possibly do in the future.
Yes.
Because sometimes the disconnect between this council and that council is so, it's like, we don't know what's being discussed.
Yeah, we're making decisions they don't want.
Or, yeah.
Yeah. It is, it is common practice for, for what it's worth in a lot of our communities that at planning commission meetings, there will, there will be like a city council report and then either the, you know, city manager or somebody or the city council liaison will provide a brief update on things that the city council did at the last meeting or something.
And I think to his question, he would like to know more about, correct me if I'm wrong, the direction the council is heading.
And just to report on what goes on there, so we're more abreast to, you know, we sense stuff that way, we never get feedback.
Right, and I don't have a problem doing it, in fact, I would enjoy doing it, but like I said, I would just like legal to weigh in.
Yep.
I've learned after the past eight and a half years, uh, legal will steer you right.
Can we put that?
You're good with that, then?
Yeah. Can we put that on next month's agenda pending the legal aspect of it? Two?
Yes.
Okay. In fact, if city council, if Jessica is here, I will ask her that.
Okay. Sounds good. Seven, four then?
I have nothing further.
Andy?
Uh, nothing further, so with, with the master plan, we'll do, we did additional research that we've talked about and then we'll give you an updated draft for the next meeting. And we'll provide a list of the significant or notable changes, I guess. Go from there.
Very good. Commissioner's remarks. Mike?
Uh, so the vote was all lit up blue and white for the Lions, I thought it was awesome. I was first, I don't know what I had there, but I pulled in, I was like, oh, that looks sweet, so I gotta show my boys this week, so that was it.
Very good. Who was in charge, do you know?
Uh, Craig Fonger sets the, I believe, sets the computer to run those lights, uh, the chamber of commerce dictates how they would like it. Shannon's doing a really good job.
I assumed it was blue and white, like icicles for winter, so thanks for the...
Oh, I thought it was...
Blue, white, it's, ah, Nicole?
Definitely, definitely. Yeah, I just figured it was the winter scene, but we'll, we'll go with yours.
Well, thank you to the, to that.
Yep.
Andy?
Stop signs on Riverside, open that up, but other than that, I'm done.
Oh, yeah, isn't that weird?
Same.
We can throw them up here, we'll just put a couple over there and open up the barricade.
Yeah.
Okay. Callie?
I'm done.
Marty?
Uh, we two are flying the little lights at our store.
For winter, right?
Yes, only for that, for you, okay, only for you. The Lions, uh...
Wait, 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 hold on.
See? I have a fan in the crowd.
Don't.
That's our Vikings.
Oh, it's Vikings, oh, you gotta leave now, sorry.